All right, call this meeting to order, please rise to pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add or alter on the agenda?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item is approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of Tuesday, April 2nd.
I make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
I'll support that. Moved and supported to approve the minutes for April 2nd as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Now, the next item is for a special board meeting. I understand that two members were not able to attend. So if you're not, if you don't think you can vote for it, then you should probably do a motion to table it. Because Patty's not here, we won't have three votes in favor of it. You can't support it. It's up to you, it makes no difference to me.
Say that again.
Okay, if you vote to approve the special meeting.
Yes.
Okay, now we call for a vote. If you're gonna vote yes, we're all set. But if you're gonna abstain, both of you, it's not gonna pass.
Well, you think the only way we're gonna abstain because we weren't here.
Right, that's up to you. You can do it either way.
No, but you, yeah, you discussed this matter with us before.
Right, you knew the meeting was on and everything.
Yeah, I didn't.
So if you don't have a problem voting for it, then make a motion to approve it. The option is yours.
Move to approve.
Support. Okay, moved and supported to approve the special board meeting of Wednesday, April 10th. Any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Okay, the next item is the financial report. Colleen?
We began the month with $250,420.50, took in receipts of $6,142.98, and made dispersments of $32,239.51, leaving us with an ending balance in the general fund of $224,323.97.
I make a motion to approve the Casco Township financial report as submitted.
Support.
Moved and supported to approve the financial report as submitted. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. The next item, your correspondence. Item A is the E S G R, which stands for Employer Support of the Garden Reserve. We received a communication from this group saying that they would like to do some type of a signing ceremony at one of our board meetings. Just kind of giving support to the Garden Reserve, especially in the area of employment. And Patty Albrecht, our clerk, has been coordinating with them, and they have set up a tentative date for the June meeting. I don't know a lot more than that because Patty's been doing it, and she unfortunately couldn't be here tonight from her commitment. But whenever we find out more details, we'll get them to you before the meeting.
A little bit of background, E S G R. Their setup is they're basically, their big thing is to educate the public employers about the responsibility under law for guardsmen reservists. There's a lot of people, unfortunately, I worked for Chrysler, so I mean, they're a big government contractor. So they're very generous with their guards, their military members who work for them. But there's a lot of times organizations who aren't. And E S G R, they serve to educate members. They serve as budsman, I think I said that correctly, services and stuff like that. And especially now, in the last 10 years, how the military has relied heavily on the citizen soldier, the garden reservist. That they've been very busy, and it's tough sometimes if you have smaller organizations to sometimes cover for that. And every year, they'll have a ceremony where people will vote, and they'll have like a large organization, like it was five years, six years ago. Chrysler was chosen. Well, Bob Nardelli, who was a CEO. And then they have a public sector that was chosen, was Sheriff Bouchard from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department. And then the private one, the small, it was just a 12-member company in Ann Arbor, I believe, who had like four reservists from like a third of their force. So, and we got to go to Washington DC for the National Level Award. It was at the Reagan Center, a couple blocks away from the White House. It was kind of cool.
It's awesome.
Yeah. And Chrysler was chosen as national winner, and Oakland County Sheriff's Department was in the public service. That was in 2008.
That's awesome.
Yeah, so, yeah, they did a lot of good work there, so.
Okay, so we'll let you know when we get details, and it's tentatively scheduled for the June meeting. Okay, moving on. Item B, Council on Aging. We received a communication similar to this last year, and we got one again this year. And since our treasurer, Colleen, knows a lot more about this stuff than I do. Even though I'm probably older than her, but she knows more about the organization. So she's been working on finding out a little more about it, and I'm gonna turn this over to Colleen.
Well, thank you. I have spoken with the people that are in charge over at the Washington Life Center, which is a school that used to be, it's a school setup that used to be owned by the East China School District. And they closed it due to falling enrollment. And was able to move the center of Cherry Beach out from the outskirts on River Road into the center of a community, which is particularly good for Marine City seniors. That it's much easier for them to get through. But it also serves Casco Township seniors, to the tune of about 98 seniors from our district, from our township. 60 and over, the programs are. And they also provide with a phone call, only asking a day in advance, transportation Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays to various classes. And also out into the community for visitations that these people might need. They are also serving, of course, meals on wheels. And so I have been talking to them ever since they gave us this year, this particular notification, that their funding has been cut. Because usually, we would say, well, we already fund a millage to them, and we pay a millage to them, and it covers quite a bit of their expenses. But the truth of the matter is, they've been cut due to sequestration or whatever, to the tune of about $700,000, the various entities in the county. And so I was talking to Debbie and asking her what might we do to, you know, provide a service for her, for our seniors, seeing that our seniors go there. And now we're investigating the question about whether it's appropriate or not to use a small portion annually to fund a program through our Parks and Rec. I don't know. I've got calls into China and East China Township, who I know have funded programs before, but where that money is coming from, whether it's their general fund or their Parks and Recreation, is a question that we need to have answered. I think that just sending them general monies is not something that we can do under our Parks and Rec program, and we certainly can't do under our general fund. We would have no money for that. But if I get some answers, and if Parks and Rec from Port Huron agrees to it, I was wondering if you would be interested in helping them with the purchase, not of a program, but she gave me a list of three things that they used quite a bit for their center. And one is they're looking for a 50-inch flat-screen LED television that they use for the game, that we game for exercise, and I guess everybody can use it at the same time, and programmers. They're also looking for a mixer, and four microphone lapels for their current P A system. So I imagine that mixer is a sound unit or something.
Yes, it is.
Is it nothing to do with the kitchen? And they're looking for...
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, well, me too, me too. Shows you what I know. And they're looking for four-floor microphones for their stage.
Who knows where they bake?
Well, they have cooking classes, baking class. I really don't know. But my question to you is, if I pursue this a little bit further and find out if we are able to give them just a portion of our Parks and Rec money as we used to do for the odd, and we have not heard from them this year. So perhaps their funding has improved, and they've gotten on state sites, which was what they were hoping to do, which the eye of, you know, that sort of funding. If you might be interested in buying one of these items for the center from Casco Township, and bringing to the attention of our senior citizens by way of our communications, whether the letters that Bill writes, you know, that goes in with the tax bills, or online would be the best way to do it. Let them know a little bit more about this center and really get them to use it a little bit more. I think they would if they knew about it.
Sure.
Some people call and ask, where do we go? Where do we go? We don't go up to Port Huron, that's too far for us. There's a few things in Lenox Township, but I think our money from the county funnels into the Washington Life Center.
Would that be eligible for any senior in Casco Township?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. It doesn't, it doesn't matter, you know, what school district they live in. It's just like the odd, that would cover, and I think there are a couple people that are on Meisner Road, and that would be either Anchor Bay or Richmond that go there. So I'm just interested in raising awareness for these programs for our gals and guys, and maybe helping them with a gift, a funding gift. Not just a personal check.
Kind of a blessing to go.
I just want to explore it, you know, and I really don't know.
And some of these items, you think, in the community, some could go in.
We could do a program from what the...
Well, I don't know. Last year, I called Mr. Broschu, the head of Park and Recs in the county, because I knew the odd was coming in requesting funds. And I wanted to see if there was other options available. And at that time, it was his determination that we couldn't use Park and Recs money for this because they're already getting millage money.
Okay.
So now, Colleen's exploring how other townships do it, if they do it from a purchase standpoint versus a donation standpoint. You know, we'll find out what's available, and then you can make a decision. Now, we haven't put any money in the Park and Recs fund for...
Boy, for...
Four years.
Yeah.
So, I mean, but, you know, a small donation might be greatly appreciated if it's possible to do it.
Boy, some of those items, you think that'd be a great donation by private individuals.
And I think they do. I think the Lions Club in Marine City and things like that, you know, help them out. But we'll see. I just know that their funding has been cut. And so I wonder if we talk to Mr. Broschu and say, well, you know, this is how much their funding has been cut, even though they have this millage rate, and so we want to give them a gift of, you know, whatever. And would that be appropriate? Because that is the only fund that I can see it coming out of.
Colleen, you said 700,000. Is that county-wide on all programs or just the council region?
Well, it said the federal government has mandated a funding cut, I think maybe that funding cut totaling about 4.5% or $700,000.
Probably county-wide.
For older adult programs funded through the Older Americans Act. So, and administered by the Council on Aging. So that might be across the board. It just sounds worse than it is. But anyway, if we have 98 people in this township...
It looks like it's a, from what they say, a net for us of 9%, of 9%. So it seems like it is across the board.
It is across the board.
700,000. That's this letter.
Right.
So I'd say, you know, look, Colleen, look into it and see what we can do and...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Does a good...
We'll present it to you and make a decision.
The odd helps out the youngsters and...
And I'd love to take a yoga class over there, if you'll excuse me from work for the first hour.
Okay, thank you, Colleen.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. Old business. Item A, discussion, Richmond Fire Contract. Okay, as you know, last month at the board meeting, we decided to go back to the previous protocol on dispatch. So that resulted in basically a year's service where the fire department was first responder. Now, our bill is calculated in part by how many runs they make. So I talked it over with Mr. Moore, and last week, we had a meeting with all the townships. And basically, I assume you could gather the information that their option was to take those runs out. Okay, so it wouldn't affect our cost over the five-year average for the next five years. And they gave us a very favorable cost on those runs of approximately $56 a run. And we charge $50 a run, which we don't always get it all, but it's very, very close. But you can also see that by doing that, just in the first year alone, you're saving $5,000 on the total amount, if you look at the two. And that would only be extended through the five-year cycle. The one is $43,612. The other one is $48,185. You got two of these, Dan, right? One of them says runs taken out.
Oh, I got you.
One runs included. So if you look at the long page, up at the top, towards the right, it's gonna give you Casco's costs. Okay? And there's a $5,000 difference just in this year. Are you with me?
I think so. I've got two of the same thing.
No, they're not the same. You see these two? Did I screw up and give you two of the same?
Yeah.
They both say included or taken out?
They both say, oh, no, no, you're right. Says taken out, I got it.
Okay, taken out is the $43,000, if you look at the long sheet. Included is $48,000. So if we went, if they didn't do anything with those runs, just left them be added into our five-year average, it would cost us $5,000 more. So I thought that was very fair of them. They were trying very hard to, you know, set things right that everybody could live with. So I told Mr. Moore and the fire department that I would bring it to the board. If you guys were amenable to this solution, then we draw up a contract for your approval at the next meeting.
When you said that we charge $50 a run, and we almost always get it.
No, but, well, anything we turn to collections, we only get 60%. And even there, not 100% collectible.
Okay.
So what it averages, maybe it's $40. I don't know. It's really hard to say because they can go into years.
Yeah, a collection agency doesn't do it free.
Right, well, they get 40%, but we give them six months, three letters. We let them pay on time if they can.
40%? Maybe I should go...
Some are more than that. Yeah, but they don't get anything if they don't get any money.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I think it's very reasonable of Richmond. I think they did a good faith effort here.
Yeah.
Trying to solve this. So I would like just a consensus, really, we don't need a motion, to move ahead with incorporating this into a new contract.
Sounds good.
Now, what we looked at was a three-year contract going back to last year, and then it would end in 50. Okay?
Oh, alright.
So, that's the plan.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. Sounds like it's, yeah, and they're in Richmond Fire Department, they do a good job.
They do.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Looks like by next meeting, they'll, we'll have this...
Hopefully, if they get it, well, see, these numbers were for nine months.
Okay.
Okay, they don't count the three months of 2013. So they're gonna have to draw up a contract and then give you a letter of understanding saying that when the numbers are in from 13, those numbers will be removed in the light manners these were. And then we should do good to go. Okay, moving on. Item 3A, local road improvements. I laid three more work orders on the table. I have them listed in your packet, but I didn't have them accessible. I wasn't accessible to them last week. There's still one missing, but it's on there, but it's just not here. So this kind of outlines the plan. I mean, all the bids aren't in from the county yet, so they got a bid in this week. They were going to pave from I-94 to Puttygut Road. And the bid came in low enough, they're gonna extend it to Lindsay Road. So we're gonna end up getting more millings out of that. Okay, on Palms Road.
Oh, Palms Road, okay.
And I haven't heard on Marine City Highway yet, how the bidding's been...
They're gonna be milling, scraping...
They're gonna cut, I think, an inch and a half off the road and repaving it. So they wanna know if we want the millings, and I said, you bet.
Right.
So we're gonna put them, we were gonna do the first mile east of Palms, Puttygut, and Lindsay, and then put the regular limestone over the top. Well, now we're gonna get more millings, but we haven't really decided which mile to pick for that. But, so those numbers might change a little bit, but not a lot. So what we're looking at tonight is, I'd like approval on the work orders, because they have to lock in the limestone.
So will Tom give us recommendation on which areas do you think to get the millings at?
To put them, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, those two miles I mentioned are always bad.
Right.
Bad, bad. Partially because it's the last mile before you get to the paved road, and you get more traffic. And it's, the subsoil's a little sandy, and those roads are always bad.
Yeah.
Now, the other millings from Marine City Highway, originally, we were gonna do the first mile of Beatty and the first mile of Meldrum. But after seeing the roads the last month or so, I think we're probably gonna shoot the two miles on Meldrum. Because that second mile of Meldrum gets far worse than the first mile of Beatty. So, and the gravel that we're supposed might get from 20 on Marine City Highway isn't a sure thing yet. But we were planning on putting that all on springboard, and then putting gravel, limestone over the top. So that's the plan. So I would like to get approval on the work orders tonight.
I make a motion to approve the Central County Road Commission work orders.
Support.
Okay, moved and supported to approve the 2013 road work orders. And we're spending a lot of money on roads this year without anything else. Just the work orders that I mentioned are $248,000. But some of that little bit is carryover, because the bridge is carryover, and we approved it last year for $28,000. But the work wasn't done till this year.
The residents will know where their money at. Tigers will be running over it.
Then we got another call for it that went out, so that's on there, and some other stuff. But we need to get this so they can lock in the limestone with the stuff coming in.
Yep.
Okay, moved and supported to approve...
Who supported it?
It was all over there. One of them made the motion, one of them supported it.
Yeah, I made the motion, Dan.
Okay, to approve the 2013 road work orders. I would like a roll call vote, please. You want me to do that, Brenda? You want me to do it?
You can do it.
Colleen?
Yes.
I vote aye. Joe?
Yes.
Dan? Okay, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is 3B. And this is the maintenance agreement for our copier. It's been in place since 2011. They never sent us one last year. So I called because we didn't have the language to go with it. So they did send me the language to go with it, and they sent me this contract. So it's hard to say exactly what it costs us a year, because it goes entirely by how many copies you make. But it's somewhere probably between $600 and $900 for the year. But that includes all the parts, labor, toner, drums, supplies, and developer. Everything but the paper and staples, so...
Well, when we had, when we had that drum replaced, it would've cost us over $700 to replace it.
Really? We're already into this year because it was April 1st. There are other companies doing this, so by next year, I might inquire around just a little bit. I mentioned in the update that the last two years, they've gone up 5% a year. It's pretty reasonable on the cost of the black and white, but the color gets kind of expensive. And when the assessor has to run the tax cards with the photos of the buildings, they have to do that color. Because they just don't come out black and white. So, so I put it on the agenda because it's enough money and it's a contract.
Do you want the automatic renewal provision? It's on the first one.
It's on the first page?
Yeah, it's actually, it's on the second, you know, page, it's a caption.
Oh, that thing?
Number one.
Well, I would think the motion would be for what's stated on the front, 4-1 to 4-1.
But their additional terms have this automatic renewal. It's not necessarily bad, but I usually take those out. Because, you know, if something goes sour, you don't wanna, and you miss the notice, you know...
You didn't put in your motion to delete the automatic renewal portion of the agreement?
I move we approve the agreement with premier, the copier maintenance, and delete the automatic renewal provision in terms of agreement, Article 1 of the additional terms and conditions. About the annual maintenance contract.
I support that.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none. I don't know, do you think we need a roll call vote for that? She's shaking her head no. It must mean yes. Colleen?
Yes.
I vote aye. Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, on the C. As we did last year, we got a thing from the county saying that there was properties that were foreclosed for tax purposes. And the state gets first option if they have an interest in the property. If they do not, then the township gets right of first refusal. So last year, we refused it. And this year, when I first looked at it, I thought, you know, we don't want it. But then when I looked at it, one of the parcels, as outlined in the thing, is a small parcel, but it's completely landlocked. And there's been problems. It was sold at a tax foreclosure several years ago, and a person in Georgia bought it. There's a building on it. People were living in it illegally, but the owner couldn't be found to do anything. And it's just trouble waiting to happen. If somebody buys it that's not a contiguous property owner, well, now they don't have an easement to get in. Well, now they'll be suing somebody, or suing us, or doing something.
Well, there is, through the river.
Well, anyway, the cost is low to purchase it. The only condition is that if you resell it, you have to turn any profit to the county. Colleen checked, and because the only condition is that it has to be for a public purpose. And the public purpose is to do away with the landlocked parcel.
In other words, it's related to an adverse condition of the property itself.
And they said that was not a problem. Okay, we're only talking $750. What is that, almost, almost three acres?
Almost three acres.
Okay, you made a motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll support that. Okay. Okay, so basically, let's get this in our, your...
We're going to...
Your motion is to...
Well, who made the motion? Nobody's...
Dan.
I did.
Dan.
I just have a question, though.
Sure.
We're planning to sell this parcel.
Yes.
Now, it says, there are clearly a lot of cases that do not meet the test for a local unit taking, selling to a neighbor. But this is not under that category.
Because it's landlocked.
Because it's landlocked, and it's a defective property.
Right, okay.
And we're going to what, offer it first to a person?
Well, there are, there's four owners... Well, there, there's four owners, the one probably goes all the way to the next row. The more logical would be that there's a very small parcel right in front of it, whose well was actually on this property, but when they couldn't use the well anymore, they had to drill another well. But I guess I'll probably contact all the property owners and talk to them, and see what's going from there.
Most reasonable.
You know, I don't want to just sell it to one, while you're talking to the other two.
Yeah. That's what I was kind of concerned about.
Right, on the township board, too, at Chinatown.
Yes, it is. So basically, your motion is to exercise our option on the landlocked parcel and approve the right of refusal on the other two. Is that what you're saying?
What was the second part of that?
Yes, that's what I said.
Approves the right of refusal for the other two parcels. Okay.
It's almost right where the four townships intersect, too.
Because the other two, the one is downtown area, it's a little bitty lot, almost, it's not on the corner.
It's a driveway.
It's ninety feet wide, but it's like one, like a hundred and fifty feet from the corner. But, you know, has no public purpose for us, and the other one's on Palms Road, and it's on the other side of a guardrail with a huge fault, so that's not real valuable stuff either. But there's no public purpose at all. So, okay.
So.
And supported by Joe, ready?
Yep.
Okay, moved and supported. Any discussion? Sounds like a roll call to me. Colleen?
Yes.
I vote aye. Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving on, next item is payment of the bills.
If no one has any questions on the bills, I will make a motion that the bills be paid.
I support.
Moved and supported to pay the bills.
What's coming from?
Coffee.
What's coming?
Filters.
Filters.
And I can't remember what else. That was probably it.
Paper plates, I'm told.
Navy paper plates.
An extravagance, to be sure.
Okay, any other discussion? Just like to mention that on the first page, two-five, six-one-three, and it was in your update, there's an eighty-seven hundred dollar bill, that was to pay off the drain commission on the Pelton Drain. So as of today, we don't owe the county drain commission any money, and so we're not paying any interest.
Good.
So, that was the payout that you guys approved, and so it made the bills a little bit higher, but we're not paying interest on it. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Colleen?
Yes.
Aye. Joe?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Citizens comments, boy, what a, Mike said he might come tonight, yes?
I have, as a citizen, could you pass those down, please? This, we are, we are far in advance of this decision coming to the board, which is why it really isn't on the agenda for discussion tonight. But our, our thirty-year contract franchise agreement with Semco is coming up. I have always been a little disappointed in the lack of, what I consider to be lack of progress in the, in the township as far as gas lines being expanded. And so I was really surprised and pleased to see, when I asked for the information, they gave me the statistics. And I don't know if you have a copy of this bill, but anyway, those are the initial statistics of the gas line in the last twenty-eight years in Casco Township, and it really was more than I had thought it was. The woman who is in this department at Semco, I've had a couple discussions with her, and one just this morning, I was asking her what the process is, because it did not work well for us the last time we, we tried it. What, what is the process for asking for a gas line access in your neighborhood? And I gave her an example of a, of a mile of the township that had substantial growth in the last twenty-eight years. And she was kind enough to say that when her schedule abates a little bit, she will come and do all of the prep work, looking at that mile, to see if it's feasible to gather information and go down that road. And if it is, if it looks something feasible for their company, she will send out notification to the neighbors as to, do they want to participate in this or look into it? So, they, they really are open to expansion if it's, if it's feasible. Just to let you know, this is, this is what they've done so far, and, because you'll be voting on that contract in a little while, you've got some time. And my other point is, if there is any particular area in the township that you would like looked into, I could call her and, and ask her to do the same thing in any other mile or road.
Can I help you?
About the school elections were here, no?
No, Columbus Township.
I gotta go to Columbus?
Yep.
You do, sorry.
Well, that's up to the court.
No, this is an exclusive franchise, they have to provide gas in the township?
Actually, um, actually, it's, it's not an exclusive, where is the, it is.
People, people call your house and want to sell you the gas service?
Yes.
Well, they do that with electricity.
Yes, it's not, it's not exclusive, in the paperwork that we have received.
What's the work they're doing in Sycroaddick?
Yeah, that's, that's another expansion.
It just, it just allows them to use our, out of way, to put in their lines, right?
Yeah.
So we have other franchises, other agreements with other companies.
Well, I looked in the records, in fourteen, nineteen forty-seven, there was an election for Detroit Edison.
Uh-huh.
I think the vote was eleven to nothing, I can't remember, it was really, but I couldn't find the actual document. And it's, they've never come back, I couldn't see in the minutes where they ever come back.
Voter turnout was terrible, that.
But from that article, you do this, it seems like, in order to do it, they need a franchise.
Yeah, apparently so. Probably to go with the Public Service Commission.
Uh-huh.
I would assume there's something connected with that.
But something in the, in the body of that said it, it was what, what is the term? It's non-exclusive, and it looks like it's kind of open-ended, if somebody else wants to come in and serve us.
But if they come in, they have to have a franchise, they have to come to us first for a franchise.
Correct. I believe if they're going to lay lines.
Lines.
Okay, but, now, once the lines are laid, another company can sell you your gas, pay Semco.
Yeah, and different, it's a different.
Right.
Yeah.
It really just relates to them coming in and putting things in.
Yeah. So, as I say, I, I was pleasantly surprised to see the growth in twenty-eight years, had the economy then stronger, and that subdivisional growth moved up the mile roads and down this way, we might have seen more, but as it is.
Thank goodness it didn't.
Yeah, yes, thank goodness it didn't. So, anyway, I will continue talking to them, they are going to do the fifty-two hundred mile of Melville Road, and what I'm thinking is that they're going to, they're going to research it coming up Meisner, which may then include St. James Church, who would be interested in that, and a couple houses on the corner of Meisner, and then the growth down the Melville Road. We'll see, we'll, you know, we'll see.
It depends on some variables, too. I mean, there may be gas within a half-mile, but it may not be a high-pressure line, so they can't extend it. So, just because this guy's got gas, and they say, "Well, I want gas," doesn't mean you're getting it from that source, because whether it's high-pressure or low-pressure.
Yeah. I remember talking about that franchise, that I remember with Detroit Edison, I don't know, how often does their agreement come out where the voters have to approve it, it's always done in the August primary?
Probably about the same amount of time.
Yeah, I remember.
I don't know, I haven't seen, the only one I saw in the minutes was from forty-seven.
Yeah, I remember it was in the mid-eighties, before I was volunteer township government, that it came up where all the property, basically, they wanted to approve the lease on, then where all their equipment, all their poles and that, and how, where to look like a millage, it only passed by one voter, it hasn't, don't you? People saw that coming in August primary, "Oh, millage, I don't want that." And, yeah, passed by one vote, you know?
How fortunate were we?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?